Good evening and welcome to the Monday, June 3, Select Board Meeting at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. We are broadcast live on local cable, Channel 8. Stream live on the Mashpee Town website, It is 6:30 and we're convening in open session. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its fellow citizens. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'd like a moment of silence. Thank you. I have a motion on approval of the following Monday, May 20, 2024, regular and executive session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
John?
Yes.
David? For regular?
For regular, yes.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Appointments and hearings. Okay, first up is our Public Works Director, Catherine.
Good evening. So the first item I'm here for is our Route 151 project Phase 2, to ask the board to vote on the order of taking for the easements necessary for the project. As stated, most of these are temporary construction easements that would allow grading related to the project, all except one are for a five-year term. Appraisals were completed and in your document you have a list of what the damages that would be paid out to the property owners are. So I'm asking that the board go ahead and vote the order of taking that was prepared by Town Council.
Is this just the frontage of the land that approaches the road?
So Route 151 is actually, has a 100-foot layout, but with the improvements that we would be doing with Phase 2, specifically the sidewalk on the south side, the multi-use path on the north side, some additional land areas needed from the private properties that abut that road to allow for the required grading for those improvements.
Do all the abutters know of the appraisal value and everything?
They have all been sent certified, multiple certified letters. Many have been returned as undeliverable, but the title was done by Town Council, so the letters were sent to the last known owners for the property.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept and approve Route 151 corridor improvement project Phase 2 order of takings for easements.
I'll second that motion.
Dated May 28, 2024.
Okay.
Second.
On second, Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, Catherine?
Thank you.
Next?
Next is recommendation for award of our, some of our annual contracts. These were new bids that were issued this spring for a variety of our service contracts. This is a one-year contract and I ask that the board approve the contracts as listed in the memo.
Anything particularly out of the ordinary? It doesn't seem to me, I didn't catch anything that was...
No, unfortunately, you know, we do follow procurement in terms of advertising, posting it both through the Commonwealth as well as in our local newspaper and on our website. We don't generate a lot of interest, so many of these, we just received a single bid, but they are relatively competitive compared to what we're currently paying.
Do I have a motion or do any questions on any of the contracts? Anybody? No? Do I have a motion to award contracts for the bids?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
Thank you, and the second part of this is there are a number of our annual contracts that are, were bid last year. We do a two-year bid, so this is the second year.
These are just renewals?
So these are just renewals.
Okay. Do I have a motion for renewals of the bids?
Second, for, yes.
Second.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Next is the annual contract for operation of the transfer station plus hauling of recyclables. So this is a contract that's just based on CPI increase, sorry, I drew blank there for a minute, over the current FY24 pricing. There's no change in operation otherwise.
Catherine, this is what we pay to have recyclables?
So we, the first number, the 518,000 is the daily operation. And then the second list is the various locations that we haul our recyclables to. This is just the hauling cost. The markets for recycling has actually improved over a few years ago. So we are getting paid for some of our recyclable materials. Others, like the plastics, we do pay a tip fee. So this is just the cost for bringing it to the market and then any revenue or tip fee we pay separately to the market.
Okay, do I have any questions?
One question, has the, has there been an increase in the use of the transfer station?
No, so I don't know if you recall when I was here a month or so ago about the sticker. It's actually, for the sticker fees for FY25, the number of stickers is relatively constant the last several years.
And that's against the reducing the cost of the transfer station, I'm guessing, more the merrier?
The more the merrier, but it's still about half of the households in Mashpee are using the transfer station. The other half, I presume, are either contracting for pickup at their house or their condo or something like that.
Yeah, I have noticed that the scenes get a little bit slower, but thank you.
Okay, I need a motion for the contract for operation of the transfer station and hauling of recyclables.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
And the last contract is for operation and maintenance of the wastewater treatment facility at the middle high school. This is for the middle high school as well as the housing authority property at Breezy Acres. This was a request for proposals. We did receive two proposals and upon review, I'm recommending that the contract be awarded to Weston and Sampson, who is our current operator.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? I need a motion?
Motion to approve the award, the contract of the operating and maintenance of the Mashpee Middle High School wastewater treatment facility.
Second.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, Catherine. Okay. Discussion and approval of M3 Ventures, including doing business as Triple M. Amended and restated host community agreement. Jonathan Hurley. Good evening.
Good evening, board members. Jonathan Hurley from M3 Ventures, better known as Triple M.
So we have the, you have the contract in your packet. The only thing that we're going to do is vote on the contract and the year of the contract. We can do a 10-year, which is, would be more suitable.
I have no problem with that.
So as far as amendments, were there any changes?
I believe it's primarily the term, sir. Were there any other conditions? It's the term.
The term, either 10 or 15 years.
And by you voting, you're authorizing me to sign off on this?
Yes.
Is that okay?
It is if the board agrees.
And has all reporting been satisfactory?
Yes, the revenues are not what we had hoped for or anticipated, but aside from that, we're all good.
And the term that's recommended is 15 years according to...
Well, we can do either 10 or 15.
Right, I'm just reading his memo, that's all.
I don't know what the board feels.
Fine with 10.
Yeah, fine with 10.
Yeah, there's no, there's no, you know, financial benefit to go to 15 from over 10, nothing correct?
And this was an option provided by council?
Is there any benefit to it?
No.
No.
I do not recall any benefit, yeah.
So the one remainder of this...
I'm good with recommended 10 if...
Yeah, I would agree.
David?
I'm good with 10.
I need a motion?
Motion to accept and approve the amended M3 Ventures Incorporated, DBA Triple M, restated host community agreement dated May 30, 2024 for the period of a 10-year term.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along, we have public comment. John Malloy?
Got a lot of paper clips. Hi, everybody. I'm John Malloy and I'm here on behalf of the Pompanessett Beach Association and the Pompanessett Working Group, which represents 580 homes in Mashpee. The PBA has been trying since February to engage in a meaningful way with the Conservation Commission regarding proposed Regulation 25. We've been rebuffed for months. We've submitted multiple letters. We've been invited, then disinvited, to a meeting with the Bylaw Review Committee. Yet at the same meeting, another member of the public did attend. We were blindsided by the ConCom at the last hearing of May 23. Prior to the meeting, we were told we couldn't send the Regulation 25 draft to the community to review and comment, but certain members on the board did send it to their supporters who came out in force. Regulation 25 discussion at the ConCom meeting on May 23 was just an absolute mess. We have engaged with the planning board and plan to hold a workshop in late June. We've engaged with the DNR and Ashley Fisher has agreed to hold a workshop with us. We're targeting late June, so we made great progress, certainly with other members of the town team. We've asked the ConCom repeatedly to hold a workshop with us to discuss Regulation 25, its goals, its issues, et cetera, and they refused to meet with us, so that's why I'm here tonight. I don't know how this is even possible in a town like Mashpee where we can't just sit down and talk about something as complicated as this. I don't know how you ignore a community of 580 households. It's just not okay to do that anywhere. This is America. Our community is very concerned and very upset and we're not going to go away. We need to figure out a way to engage with these folks. So we're, you know, we're asking you for help. Regulation 25 is just not a minor regulation. It's going to change Pompanessett and the town forever. It is a, it has huge implications that nobody's talking about. And it's going to have significant long-term financial consequences for the town as well. We, you know, we look at the sewer system and what that's going to cost. We need the long-term tax revenue and this is going to impact that in a negative way. The Conservation Commission, in our opinion, needs to wait until the DE process has run its course. We need to learn from the industry experts. I heard the other day that the DEP received over 800 responses from parties in their process. Eight hundred, those industry experts, you know, you name it, they're involved in that process. We need to learn from that. We would also ask that the town hold meetings and hearings on this proposed regulation to discuss the potential health, safety, environmental and financial impacts to the town. They are significant and can't be ignored. We're all going to live with the consequences, so please help us. I would also like to say that I know that you have an interview tonight. We'd also like to ask that you approve Richard Saul to the Conservation Commission. We think he's an excellent candidate for the associate member position and will bring some excellent perspective to the board. It'll be nice to see that board fill the open slots with strong, diverse candidates. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Johnston?
Good evening. My name is Joe Johnston. I've been a property owner with my wife in Pompanessett for 35 years. This is the first time I've actually attended a meeting, a board, and it's probably a long overdue, something I should have done. I'm also a member of the Pompanessett community and my goal, our goal, is to build a modest home. We're in a very small Cape house right now. When we purchased our home 35 years ago, we were told that we're not in a wet plane. And then all of a sudden, I learned recently that we are. And then I hear about this regulation that's going out there and I'm concerned about the effect it's going to have on the little person in the community. We have a small piece of property. You know, our family is growing with grandchildren now and this is what we want to do. We want to retire to this community. And my fear is with this regulation is not being thoughtful. You know, John Malloy spoke a little while ago with the reference from the board, the working group, just trying to engage with people, try to have a conversation. It's just not happening. It's not been transparent. I've did, I'm not an engineer. I've done a little research and I looked up in DEP website, getting a little information about the regulations that they're proposing. So back in December, they issued their draft and then they invited comments for three months. Then after three months, and so many people were engaged with this, they extended their comment period. They had multiple information meetings. They had open hearings, three open hearings where folks could just come in and be heard, as well as virtual meetings. They had walk-in meetings where folks could just walk in and have a conversation, try to find out. John Malloy mentioned that during the comment period, they have 800 commentary from the experts in the industry, the scientists, the environmental experts that are weighing in on this. And my fear is that this regulation is going to box the little guy out, that we're not going to be able to afford to do a modest improvement to our home. In my community in Pompanessett, I look at some of these buildings that have been built and it just blows me away that on posters stamped size lots, folks have really gone overboard. And I think people like us are going to pay the price when we just want to build a modest home. The DEP is responsible for 351 towns in Massachusetts. Their goal is to advise the 351 conservation commissions throughout Massachusetts. But this conservation commission does not want to wait until the regulations are promulgated. They just want to go forward. They haven't been transparent. It's just not fair. And what I'm urging you, I don't know what authority you have on this point, but what I'm urging you is to use your influence to slow this down, let the experts weigh in. These are the environmental experts across the state that have everyone's interest, I think, at heart. So I'm asking you, as sort of a little guy, just think about us and think about what effect this regulation would have. And why can't this just be slowed down and wait for the experts to weigh in, let the DEP come up with their regulations?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Communication and correspondence? New business. Discussion and approval of order of taking of Christopher Lane. This is the second phase of the taking? Is there anyone here from Christopher Lane? No? Do I have a discussion with the board? Approval? A motion?
Motion to accept and approve order of taking for Christopher Lane as presented, dated May 30, 2024.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Interview, discussion and possible appointment of Conservation Commission Associate Member. Term expires June 30, 2025. Richard Saul. Good evening, Richard.
Good evening. My name's Richard Saul. I live at 351 Monmouth Square Road and thank you for allowing me to sit in front of you and express my interest in joining the Conservation Committee and again, thank the Conservation Committee a couple of weeks ago that let me do the same. So I started that interview with them, kind of expressing one of the reasons why I'd like to be on conservation. Three years ago, my girlfriend and I had some plans drawn up to build a boat barn garage-type building in the front of our property. We had the plans drawn up, didn't have any permits yet, but I'm sure all of you know on Cape Cod, trying to get someone to come out and do some stuff isn't exactly easy at times. So I said, oh, what the hell, I'm going to call a tree guy and start that process, at least I know I could get that done. Well, I cut some trees down and I guess some trees would be 48, to be exact. And then probably a few weeks after that, Drew came out and obviously it was during COVID. He had knocked at the door and my girlfriend was on a Zoom meeting with probably around 40 or 50 people, so she probably didn't have the time to talk to Drew as she probably could have. But she did call me after he left. I was fortunately working in the area. I was able to get to the house before Drew had left the house. Had a short conversation with him and, you know, he started telling me that I was in violation of wetlands and coastal flowage and at that time, I'm like, wetlands? I'm like, I'm 100 feet from the water. We had just got done building an accessory apartment and I figured, oh, I was 100 feet from the water. He's like, oh, most people think that, you know, it doesn't really go that way. So needless to say, it's been an eye-opening experience for me. Certainly learned a lot through the process. During that process, Drew and Daniel had been out to the house. We hired a company out of North Falmouth to put forth a mitigation plan and with Drew and Daniel's approval, we got that signed off, so to speak. We've implemented that plan. The plantings are in the ground as we speak, so, you know, we've certainly moved forward on that. But like I said, it was an eye-opening experience. It was stressful at times because I really didn't know much about the process and I'm certainly learning about it now. So, you know, it's kind of one of the reasons why I'd like to do this. I don't really want anyone else to go through it. It's, like I said, it was very stressful and if I can maybe do my small part with that, I think it would be helpful. Like I had mentioned to the board a couple of weeks ago, I'm coming up on 27 years with the fire department. Next July, I'll be 28 and I am going to retire and I've enjoyed public service immensely. And through this process with, you know, the trees and I've always thought like, I'd like to continue to do that and how can I continue? And I thought, obviously with conservation and what I went through, I thought this would be a good opportunity for me to keep that public service going. I wanted to stay active in the town of Mashpee. I've been here for 28 years. So I thought it would be a good fit for me. You know, I probably didn't mention to the board, but to say that I'm an avid fisherman would probably be an understatement. If I'm not at the beach at Washburns, I'm fishing, I'm walking, you know, South Cape Beach with my rod, fishing, doing whatever, I love being outside. I believe in clean waters. I was at town meeting, I voted for Phase 2. My girlfriend and I, my parents, my brother, we all live in Mashpee, we're not going anywhere. I want to be here, I want to contribute to the town. And I just think it would be a very good opportunity for me and I hope with your approval that you would allow me to sit on the Conservation Board and help Mashpee continue to move forward. And like I said, I want to see clean waters, not only for the rest of my life, but for generations to come and I do believe in conservation and I just want to do my small part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions for Richard?
I just have, just one more of a statement. I appreciate your honesty coming up and, you know, stating the fact that you made an error. And I would be curious if, I don't know if it's a little out of the ordinary, but I believe Drew is here in the audience. I wouldn't mind hearing from Drew, if possible, about the chair. If, just to say, as far as was Mr. Saul contrite? Did he, you know, was he able to resolve the problem to your...
Satisfaction.
Satisfaction and was he easy to, did he realize the wrong he did? If you don't mind?
No, not at all. So Drew McManus, Conservation Agent, Herring Warden and Tree Warden for the town of Mashpee. Yes, so just to kind of go over what Richard had described, the 100-year floodplain is jurisdictional under Mashpee's wetland bylaw. So it encompasses, you know, a pretty substantial area that, you know, for all intents and purposes, you know, can be pretty far away from actual wetlands. So from a public perspective and understanding, I completely understand, you know, when someone says they weren't aware that they were within wetlands jurisdiction and they knew about the 100 or 150-foot setback to wetlands and then weren't aware that the flood zone, which is, you know, encompasses a substantial area beyond that 150-foot buffer zone. So whenever we encounter violations of that nature, it comes with the understanding that there was not awareness. And so Mr. Saul understood that. He has cooperated 100%. There weren't any issues as far as gaining compliance. He was willing to follow the compliance procedures that we outlined and he has now instituted the plantings and there's a little, you know, maintenance that goes along with that, so it's not completely in compliance yet, but it's in substantial compliance. So the fact that he acknowledged that before the commission, cooperated fully and as a result of that, truly wants to contribute towards, you know, the awareness, which I appreciate because, you know, out of all the regulatory departments in town, border health, building, zoning, conservation is probably the least known in terms of jurisdiction. So it takes a lot of explaining, it takes a lot of education. So someone who's willing to help in that regard, I think, would be invaluable. So I fully endorse Mr. Saul's application to become a member of the Conservation Commission.
Thank you.
Good, welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Any more questions? David?
For me, I'm looking over some of the vetting process of the concerns of the committee and I think one of the concerns that was raised was, you know, do you run a business, a personal business associated to construction or anything?
Yes, I'm a licensed electrician. So when I'm not at the fire department, I have contractors, a few contractors, I only have one other employee, so I'm fairly small. But yeah, I've been running that business for, let's say, I've been a licensed electrician. So I'm 57 since '21, '22, so I've been at it a while.
Any of those projects in Mashpee or is mostly work outside of Mashpee?
Yes, I have Mashpee right now, more specifically as far as where...
Either or.
I have, yeah, I have one on Monmouth Square. I have another one in Falmouth. Lot of service work that I do, so I kind of bump around, but mostly from town to town. I have another one actually in Falmouth on Seaco Shores, which actually just got signed off last week, but there's always a punch list there. But yeah, most of my stuff's in Mashpee and Falmouth area.
Do you perceive any sort of conflict of interest approving projects or discussing projects that may come before you as a business owner that's subsequently involved with construction or work for construction?
I don't. And if there's a project where... I don't. And if there's a project where I might be involved with, I will recuse myself. One thing I can say, I, I try to do the right thing. So if there is a project that might end up on Conservation's desk, I will recuse myself.
And what sort of skill sets do you feel as though you, you'll bring to the Conscom with the work that they do and your familiarity with the work that they?
Well, like I said, I don't have a lot of experience with it. But when I had my interview, I think one of the members had asked if I'd be willing to, I'm not sure if they're not Zoom classes, but certain classes or online classes to, to educate myself in the process or the rules of conservation, and I certainly would. So I think whatever I need to do or whatever the Conservation Committee thinks that they, that I should do to get up to speed, and I certainly am willing to do that. But like I said, I've, I've worked with the public for the last 27 years. I've worked with builders. I've worked on some big houses. So I think one of my skills is being able to communicate with people and, and get things done.
Tom? David, are you done?
I have a question from, I'm very, very obvious with his positions.
I have a couple. I actually watched the statements. On the, from the committee, there was a few statements in here that were negative because I guess you have a job, so I'm kind of concerned about those comments. So like most firemen, they have a secondary job. That's, so I, a couple of the negative responses or comments in here, I'm, I'm a little confused. One of the comments in here kind of goes into talking about global warming, potential global warming, whether you agreed with potential global warming or not. I don't think that has, whether you agree with global warming or not. And I'm not really sure, but, and I'm injecting global warming into it because they're talking about changing in the climate change, climate change. And so, and again, there's another mention of, because you're an electrician. Listen, if we had to take people, members of the committee only from retired people that did not have a side job, I think we'd be in trouble in this town. So I appreciate your interest, and I wholeheartedly respect Drew McManus and how you dealt with the problem, the issue. I think that goes a long way, as Drew mentioned, about how you can teach others and that influence. And, and it is absolutely, I have to agree with your statement, Mr. McManus, as far as our understanding, my understanding, I have no idea. That's, that's why we have you. But again, and the committee can be, the commission can help with, you know, expanding that communication. So I have no other comments besides that.
Well, I like it that people that live here are starting to get involved in issues, and you'll learn as you go. I know I've been on this board 15 years, and I didn't know. And I've learned as I've gone along, and I appreciate you coming for us and telling us your story. And I have no issues. So I'd like to have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Richard?
Richard Saul. And also, yeah, just actually just as a, an additional Jamie, is it shoe? The letter recommendation, that was a nice testimony as well, just as far as into the record. But, but other than that, I'd like to recommend Richard Saul for the Commission, Conservation Commission.
I'll second that motion very happily.
Madam Chair, for discussion purposes, I, I think the Resolution 001, each of the commissions were supposed to provide the evaluation, but then there was supposed to be an attachment that there was a, we strongly recommend, we don't recommend, we recommend. That was kind of, there was, there was a standardized approach to all appointments that we've been kind of going over for quite a while, looking for that consistency, and I don't see that.
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that this form was developed as a result of the revision to 001. I would have to double-check to be 100% certain, but I think this form replaced what you are referring to. But again, I would have to, to be 100% certain, check 001, and we can do that if you would like.
And I could be wrong on it, but I mean, it was my understanding that these forms inform that matrix box where, where you had strong recommend, recommend not recommend. And, and the forms were evidenced and were provided as backup for the justification of the final results of that in, that came on from, from the actual.
We can get clarity on that. I don't have 001 in front of me, but we can get that very quickly, just to clarify.
That would be helpful.
But we can still go forward with the?
Sure, why not?
Yeah, I don't see, I mean, I see no reason.
Recommendation is there. We didn't have recommendations individually.
Exactly.
But I, I think actually, I think we appointed someone at the last meeting.
Yes.
I don't remember any summary sheet.
Right.
So I don't.
No, I'm very satisfied with the appointment.
We have a motion in a second. So we'll start. Tom?
Yes.
Yes, David?
For me, I, you know, looking at the recommendations, I have to say no, just to support the commission.
I'm a yes.
And I'm a yes. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anything I need to do on my end, or should I just wait to hear?
Nope, you just need to show up at your next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
And also to sign in with the clerk's office to be appointed. You're welcome.
Thank you for volunteering your time. Thank you.
Discussion and approval of our appointment list, boards, commission, and committees and councils. Okay, so. All right, we did this last year. We did it as a group. Everybody that was expiring on the committees to reappoint them to their committees. And it should be this list that you have in front of you.
And unless there's any exceptions, we just?
Right.
Motion to approve.
Right, and they will, exactly.
All listed appointees.
Exactly. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay. Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Nominations, discussion, and approval of the select board representatives to the following. CPC, Community Preservation Act. I nominate Michaela to see, to stay on CPC.
Second.
Second.
David to second.
You gave it a second? Yes.
And yes? David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Capital Improvement is myself.
Motion to appoint, to keep Carol on as the CPC?
CIP.
CIP, rather.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay. I nominate David to stay on as Environmental Oversight Committee.
Second.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
And you want to stay?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm a yes. And I would like to stay on as Economic Development.
So moved. I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you, everybody. Assignments for the select board lays on. I'm going to send, give you all a copy. Look it over, and if there's any questions, you can.
Different than this?
Is that a revised version?
Oh, this is the new one. Oh, there was one in your pocket?
Yeah.
Oh, well, I guess.
I think the old one was in your pocket.
All right, yep.
This is the new one. There's only one change on it.
So we'll look at this and then?
And then we'll vote on it at the next meeting. Okay. Old business. Discussion and approval of the letter relative to the Joint Base Cape Cod Machine Gun Range. You should have that in your packet also. Did Michaela chime in on this, Wayne or Rodney? She was going to read it?
She did receive it. I had no comment.
Okay. No comments, okay. Is everybody okay with the letter?
I don't have a problem.
Do I have a motion?
I don't have a, I don't have a major problem with it. But the, the whole, the whole thing changed dramatically after our meeting with finances for the?
Yes.
The range were denied. So I don't even know if.
We need to send the letter?
I mean, if you got, if your funding source said no.
Right.
I, I don't know unless you, do you know anything more, David? I don't know.
No, but I, I think, you know, it's still taking a firm position. We discussed it at our last meeting. I think this captures the essence of what we proposed. So I mean, I, I see nothing harming, you know, putting forward the letter to reaffirm that position.
Right, just saying that we express our concerns.
Yeah, it's a very soft.
That we had three years ago, and it's still there.
I, I.
If you want to just put the brakes on and find, get a clearance, get some.
Yeah, so I'll.
I'd make a motion to, to approve, accept and approve the letter as presented.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
John? And I'm a yes. Okay, additional topics. Lays-on reports.
I'll go for the school. Graduation went off, went a great. There seems to be a lot of retirement going on at the school. So there's going to be a whole new leadership, principal, superintendent. That's, that's a lot at the top of a high school. But graduation went great. Proud of the kids, and that's about it for the, you know, as far as schools. I think that's it for me.
For me, the EOC met and some other discussions. We'd like to convene that meeting that you have done in the past where we bring the?
Roundtable.
Collective heads of different boards and committees to the table and kind of have a robust discussion. There was, there was, folks were all in favor of doing that. That's all I had.
Okay. Want to remind everybody that Health Day Thursday across at the park, June 6, 5 to 7. And sticker season is upon us, and articles for town meeting have to be in by July 8. Oh, and Council of Aging, Aging, open house is tomorrow, June 4, 9:30 to 4:30. And, huh? Nope, okay. Water quality updates. Nothing? Town manager updates.
Just as a friendly reminder, Madam Chair, which you have already alluded to, the sticker office is open. Everyone will need their new sticker on July 1 for access to like the transfer station or the beach. I also would remind everyone, as you mentioned, I believe, that the articles for town meeting are due July 8. Want to remind everyone that town offices will be closed in observance of the Juneteenth holiday on Wednesday, June 19. And I am very pleased to report that we did receive a National Grid commercial heat pump rebate in the amount of $261,625.
Good.
And that was for the cooms. And last but not least, we had a total of two submittals for legal counsel. So what I would like to do is have the assistant manager distribute these to you. And I'm not looking for any action. I'm not looking for any comment. I'm just distributing for the purposes of further review. It is possible, and I will contact you, Madam Chair, that we may need, as much as I am reluctant to say it, we might need a special meeting on the 17th.
Okay.
I think it's the 17th. It's a Monday.
Yes.
For the sole purpose of looking at this.
Sure.
But I invite you to take a look at it. The rates are in there, which I know is important to all of us. And you can look at their background. And anybody that would like to see it is entitled to it because it's now a public document since I distributed it to the board. And it'll be on the website tomorrow.
Okay. That it?
That's it.
Okay. So we are, I move that the board convene an executive session pursuant to General Law, Section 30A, Subsection 21A II and A VI to discuss strategy regarding negotiations with non-union personnel, PAP, and to consider the deposition and value of real property located at 35 Lake Avenue, 409 Main Street, and 415 Main Street Mashpee to the Mashpee Wapinawg Tribe, where the chair having declared that an open meeting regarded this topic may be detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the town. The select board will reconvene an open session?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes, I will stick around for the Personal Administration Plan discussion. And then prior to the value of real property discussion, I will recuse myself from those proceedings as, as previously done in the past.
Thank you, David.
Is there a second?
Do I have a second?
Second, sorry. Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.